Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-three revised orders spending certain provisions, they'll be meeting law. GL Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen, meetings of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District, school committee will be conducted both in person and remotely through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The agenda items listed is the are those listed, are those recently anticipated by the chair? Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed. Items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being recorded by CTSB, the school committee recorder, and other members of the public. Once transcribed and approved, minutes will be made public and posted to our website. So we will start with a roll call of members. William Moe.
Present.
Anne Hutchinson.
Here.
Jason St. Peter.
Here.
Bonnie Von Befoni.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Diane.
Here.
Cory.
Here.
Rich.
Here.
And I am present, the entire school committee is here. We have in our packet that sent to us the minutes of July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have a motion to approve? Yeah, maybe there's a slight correction which which Cory saw. And on the request for approval, a word got left out. So in the middle of that paragraph, the sentence reads, the second one is the starting pay was listed nineteen dollars an hour, which abstractly is a terrible starting pay. And it should have been, and I've rewatched the video to confirm it, which abstractly is not a terrible starting pay. So I'd just like to add the word not.
Motion to approve amended by Dr. Don.
So moved. Sorry, motion to approve by Rich and and Bill both second, do I have any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote, vote, Bill. Hi, it's Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie.
Hi.
Sarah. Bill.
Hi.
Diane.
Yes.
Cory.
Hi.
Rich.
Hi.
And hi, it's unanimous. But right into the superdennits report. Okay, so I'll go to the schools next, just since we last met, we had a really positive three-day administrators retreat, and the first day was here, and then the second two days or two nights we spent in Charlemagne Hall, very positive, did a lot of good work, got got some clarity on some things. And we'll be sharing that at the staff welcome breakfast, which is coming up. And if you haven't received an invitation to that, often Bill goes, occasionally Anne and some other folks have gone. Cory's gone, you're welcome to join us for for that. And I just want to confirm our date. So that's Tuesday the twenty-ninth at around seven forty-five or eight. But if you've not received a formal invitation, you you will get one. So there's that. Katie, anything to add from the elementary school?
Just two things in case families are listening. Yep. On the twenty-eighth at five-thirty at Monty Brook for any district E L family, we're holding a information online. So they can join us for that. Also, for M V E, we are doing a meet and greet from two-thirty to three-thirty on the twenty-ninth. So kids can come in and meet their teacher and just see their classroom before the next day. So just to get those two things out there.
Okay. Miles, anything exciting at DuBois?
Uh, yes. But they have them excited. After the administrative retreat, our instructional needs and social emotional needs in in the building got together for two days last week. So kind of built on the work that the administrative team did to do some strategic planning for the year. And get two days of PD plan, and that was really productive. We are on the same night as the family forum for established families. We're doing a one-school, one-story read-aloud for our one-school or our summer reading program. And we're hoping to kind of get some energy from kind of bumping those two events off of each other. So I think that should be good. Then on August twenty-fourth, ten noon, we're having an annual open house for D students. And mostly that's fifth graders, but there's plenty of students in other grades who are new and want to come in and see their classrooms and try their lockers. And so that's always a really fun day.
Great. And and online, Keith is joining us from the high school. Keith, anything to share?
Good evening, everybody. The excitement is starting to build at the high school. I talked with a number of faculty and staff today, and they said they feel like we're turning a corner. And they're optimistic about this new year. Some things are starting to make it feel real. We're planning for our new student orientation, which will be happening a week from next Tuesday at one o'clock. Next Thursday, the Student and Adult Advisory Board Steering Committee, made up of students and staff, are going to be having a retreat to plan what what we're looking to do in the coming year. And I've been interacting with a lot of teachers who are wrapping up summer P D around some diversity, equity, and inclusion work and some proficiencies work. So a lot of a lot of good things happening.
Great, and Keith, just one other thing, just because you'll be with us and you may not be later in the meeting. Can you just explain the SAB retreat? And and the date of that, so so we can get the school committee approval?
Yeah, absolutely. The the SAB retreat, this will be the second time that we did that, did it. We did it last year towards the end of September. This year, Camp High Rock can host us on September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And last year, we had close to fifty students and ten staff get together to really think about Monument and what what kinds of things, you know, can they can the students work on over the course of the year to bring out the best best that Monument can be? And and we we did that in collaboration. We had Regina from Railroad Street Youth Project, Katie Staley from Up for Learning to help us facilitate students and staff learn how to facilitate and and collaborate and and bring out the strengths that each group has to offer. So it was a really positive experience last year. It's grant funded.
Great, and would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Okay.
Motion by Bill, second by Rich, discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Here, she's frozen. You're new.
She's frozen, you can quiet her, yes.
Sarah. Bill. Yes. Diane.
Right.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yes.
Rich.
Yes.
And yes, and Bonnie, you back, she is not so, or does not in positive votes? Okay, thank you for that, and thank you to Keith. So we don't necessarily remember items tonight, often we lose students in in the summer. And I do have a standing item for grant approvals. So we're always compulsively writing grants. And we got another one, and this actually transitions well. But this is for out-of-school time, and it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for after-school programs. So I'm psyched about that. It makes sense to vote to approve that, that's going to be our practice going forward.
Motion to accept a grant, I support by Dr. Don.
Second, do we have a name of a sponsor? It's through Destiny, and it's the out-of-school time grant.
It's us.
So motion by Rich, a second by Bill, any discussion? Hearing none, or roll call, Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Bonnie. Cory also. Cory, go ahead.
Quick question, is this separate and distinct from Project Connection?
No, it's it's part, it's for Project Connection.
Okay. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Did we get Bonnie, Matt? No, Sarah.
Aye.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Rich.
Yes.
And yeah, so it's nine affirmative votes. Okay, great. And then I'll just use that to transition. I'd like to introduce two new staff people. And the first one is J. P. Oakin, so he's our, he's got the longest title in the district. He's our educational director of out-of-school learning. And we may change that in the future.
What is that, is that something that current, or did it?
But but he he wrote the grant, which is great. Nicely done. But I asked both J. P. and Ellie to introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what what they're working on and excited about.
So I'm J. P. Oakin. I've been an educator since nineteen ninety-five in various roles. Also a certified project management professional. So I bring a number of years of project management experience into this role as well. I've been a classroom teacher, a school administrator, director of technology. And I spent a number of years in educational publishing as well. So I'm hoping to bring all of those skills into confluence to try to run this program as efficiently as possible. I started at the end of April, and I just spent the last three months mostly assessing the current state and identifying some things that absolutely positively needed to be fixed before before fall. We did have a very successful summer school. The I'm still crunching numbers, but the big stars of summer school were the attendance numbers. We were at ninety-three percent, I believe, in the high school, just over ninety percent in the elementary school, and just right around eighty percent at the middle school. Those are very good numbers for summer school attendance.
Great, thanks and welcome. And Keith, you'll be coming back and doing sort of other presentations about how things are changing. He's in the middle of a rebranding thing, so we'll hear about that as well. Our next person is Ellie Russo. Ellie joins us as our middle school assistant principal, and she's homegrown. She was for many years especially a teacher in the middle school.
Yes. I hope you guys have had a great summer so far. I think the Berkshire weather has really kept us on our toes. If you attended a Ring Tango concert, I'm sorry, I know too. So as we go for the fast approaching school year, I'm just really excited to be supporting our faculty and students in my new role. As you may know, DuBois is a familiar place for me, as I've spent the last six years leading the developmental disabilities program. And in that time, I've really gotten familiar with our district's goals, mission, what we strive to be. And I'm just eager to learn from my fellow administrators, community, faculty, students, and how I can contribute to achieving those goals. As Maya was mentioned, you know, getting together with our teacher leaders is really a rewarding time as a reframing of school year and do some really true data work. That's going to be an important practice in our year this year. I'm also working to create some resources for faculty to support higher levels of engagement for our learners and, you know, give them the confidence and tools to help shape behaviors so that they, the students can also be, you know, active participants in their learning. I'm excited to have a teaching team to grow the school and, you know, find a culture. And yeah, I'm ready to go. Thanks so much for your dedicated time.
Great. Okay, so I think now we'll move to the superdennys evaluation. And Anne, Cory, and Bonnie, board on it.
Okay, so you have a lot of papers in front of you, and this is the system that is given us to us by the state, which is a little odd, I think, as an evaluation, but still to what we've used. So I just want to highlight a few things. And some of it is not all in there. One of the most important things, I think, in terms of Dr. Dillon is that he's going to go from one day a week in Richmond to one day a month, which means he's got a lot more time for us, which is really, really important. As we going forward, especially into school building, high school building, and the merger into which he has put a lot of energy. I think that some of the most important things going forward in this year are going to be supporting our greatest asset, which is our teachers, our faculty, the parents. But that's, I think, the place that's most needed in terms, in terms of an outsider looking at the school, in terms of supportive staff. And, you know, it's just working together with a lot of new administrators and a lot of core teachers who have done a great job and really want to keep working at their very, very best. And they need all the support that we can give them. And then just going forward, there were just three of us on this committee, and we're hoping when we rearrange our our group, that there'll be at least four of us going forward. Because we may try to meet about once a month, or once every other month, to to talk about the goals for the coming year.
And I'll just share one of the things, the committee's unusually and quite intentionally named the Evaluation and Advisory Committee. So it's it's not only evaluating, it's the Assembly Board, they're conversations about some really complex things, so it's something I appreciate a lot. Any questions, Cory? You want to add anything, or Bonnie?
I'm good, I think Anne did it. I just, I wanted to reiterate Peter's point, I guess, that I certainly, as a committee member, have gotten a lot out of the advisory meetings and the fact that this is an ongoing thing. And it's not just a a once-a-year meeting. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate Peter's commitment to that. And I feel like the next stage of this would just be to start to formalize goals for the upcoming year, just to kind of continue the the cycle of this, so.
There's one hand up, Amy, just state your name and address. Just unmute yourself. You're unmuted, go ahead. She's being muted, so. Peter, were you surprised by anything in this? No, I don't think so. There's there's always room for growth, there are always certain places to do more. I'm lucky to have a nice team that's that's supportive and and, yeah, I take a lot of it hard. There's some thing for for twenty years, I've been trying to figure out how to delegate and share things better. It's not a surprise, it's like something I have to keep keep working on. But no, the the conversations were productive, and the the form represents some of that. And it's it's not big enough to to capture all of it, but it was helpful and it was worth it. And so is the committee involved in goal setting, Peter?
Right, Peter sets goals, and then we go back, go back and forth, and we talk about them and come up with ideas that, especially things that we hear people talk to us, which is good. We want parents and teachers and people to talk to us because it is a way that we can formulate things and then go back to Peter and talk about it.
And typically, I said five or six goals, and they all look at me and say, come on, let's do, let's do three. And we land it, four, and go, and sort of go. Anyone else? So a motion to accept the end of cycle, some div evaluation for the superdennys. Second, discussion?
I just want to say that in conversations that I, I'm on the building committee, and I said to somebody, Peter's optimism in regards to this project that we initiated and started a journey is, has been outstanding. I am rich, both know where we came from a couple of years ago in regards to our attitude toward would the MSBA ever be open to us? And Peter was just so optimistic and kept on saying, no, we're going to be able to get it done. And we.
He's right.
And he was right. So I want to give that also added. It's not reflective, so they have said there's so many things that probably aren't reflective in this form. But that is one, I think that's to his credit.
Yeah, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, roll call, vote. Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Yes.
And I, I don't believe mine is back, so that's nine affirmative votes. Excellent. Okay, so the next one is, and and this was sort of more of a technical thing. You voted to approve an agreement with Farmington River for tuition for general education. But but attached now is a additional agreement for for tuition for special education. And it's largely parallel, but the the base rate is is different. So I'm bringing this back to you to ask you to approve and support that.
And this is the same one that we talked about, that basically session like two months ago. I'm I'm going to motion approve the tuition agreement for the special education tuition agreement.
Second to the motion. So a motion by Rich, second by Bill, any discussion? Not seeing any, no hands up. Roll call, Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Yes.
Jason.
Yeah, hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Cory.
Aye.
Rich.
Hi.
And I, it passes nine to zero. Okay. And I should have said this at the beginning, and then I could just call on a second. But I think that the biggest part of our meeting tonight is the Stoke Collective's report and presentation. And and that's that's next, right? So there are lots of people at home who may have the agenda in front of them, but that's coming up next. And we're excited for that. So in your packet, you have a little memo from Christie about unified sports, particularly unified basketball. And we asked Carl to come and give a little context about it and to to respond to questions. So Carl, can you summarize it?
Yeah, I'm reading from the proposal, I think everybody, you guys got that. Basically, teams are composed of students with and without intellectual and physical disabilities. The team will represent our school community as a varsity team. So we have, we're trying to start a unified basketball team during the volleyball season. And we have coaches hired, we have a practice schedule built in, we're easily added to the game schedule for the fall. And we've got just a lot of people that are very enthusiastic about it, and they want to give it a go. I won't go through the whole proposal, but that pretty much sums it up.
Any questions or things people are wondering? I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Is there no interest from the students?
There is, yeah. We've done some checking, some of the students, there is, I think we have enough. And we'd be playing, you know, we with McCona has a unified basketball, Monk Ramlock, Pittsfield. We make up the fourth Berkshire County team, and then there's an Iron Valley team.
Anyone else with questions?
Are these high school students only?
At the moment, but we are exploring doing a co-op with the middle school. Yeah.
Do we have to get a M I A waiver for that?
I don't think it's as detailed, and I think more it would be the logistics of getting the athletes over from DuBois to Monument, practice, and for games and things like that, yeah.
The other question I had was, if you are already playing a sport, varsity sport in the fall, are you prohibited from doing this as well?
It would be, it would be hard to do because practices, the unified team will practice on Tuesday and Thursday right after school. And then they'll have one game each week. So if you're doing soccer, volleyball might be a possibility because we're working around the volleyball schedule. We're looking at some of our basketball players that are not playing a ball sport as also being host athletes on their team.
That was a good question, so you can do both. If you do this, you're not taxed out of regular basketball?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay.
Does two twenty-minute halves, I mean, that's college time, college basketball has two twenty-minute halves.
Right, I like if it's running, there might be running time.
There's no stoppage.
Unless it's a bow shot.
Yeah, okay.
So it goes pretty quick.
I know McCona has been, you know, highly successful on many different levels. So I really appreciate you bringing this to the forefront. I think it's going to be a, you know, a great win for everybody. I'm really excited about going to some of these games.
Yeah, I think it's great, it supports inclusion and teamwork, people working together, it's a nice direction.
And we're going to start off with basketball, the other, there's also spring track that we might do if if the if the fall goes low, we'll try it in spring, but not really for next year. Those are the two sports in the unified season.
Joe, a motion?
Motion to approve the proposal regarding unified basketball.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, motion by Rich, any other discussion? Hearing none and all online, roll call, Bill.
Hi.
Anne.
Yeah.
Jason.
Hi.
Sarah.
Hi.
Bill.
Yes.
Diane.
Yeah.
Cory.
Yes.
Yes.
And I, pass it to you. So thank you for that, that's great, and Carl, thanks for working to support it. So the next thing is is our friends from the Stoke Collective presenting their report. I I think, oh, it's good to text them. I think I promoted everybody, but obviously I missed one, so let me just get her up. And then we'll then we'll jump into this. Great, and thanks, sorry, I think I promoted you accidentally, and I meant to promote my. Great. So we're excited to hear from you, the the reports in our packet, everybody on the school committee read it cover to cover. And I hope lots of people in the community read it as as well, and we're excited to to hear from you.
Wonderful, so excited to be here. It's so nice to see some familiar faces. Congratulations to Ellie and Miles for your new roles in JP, was it PJ or JP? Sorry, my brain. Our new, nice to meet you too, so excited for all of you. It's great to hear that you all had a successful admin retreat and that some of the really cool stuff that we uplifted in the report is still going, it's getting the investment it needs. I I hope a lot of this is is a summary, is review, and like some of the stuff that we'll be lifting up as recommendations, sounds like it may already be underway. So I'm just going to preface that way. And we'll we'll be talking kind of quick and want to make sure that there's plenty of time for for Q and A at the end from from anyone. So Maya, when are we ready?
Yeah, Stephen or. Would you allow?
I'm trying to let you screen share, but I'm not not figuring out how to do it. Sorry that we didn't rehearse this part.
No worries.
Yeah, it's not letting me to the microphone. Let me screen share. It's not, I'm not even seeing the option to make her a co-host. You're right. You don't see that, do you? Maya, this is silly, do you want to email it to me and I'll share it for you?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, let's do that, sorry.
The CTSB, is there somebody who need me to make another co-host?
Yeah, actually, if you can make Maya Ross a co-host, that'd be great.
Okay. See if that works for you.
Thank you. It did not, but Peter, I'm going to drop the the links to the slides here and then I'll also email it to you just in case it's faster than the chat.
Okay, so Maya, it says you're a co-host now, so you might be able to do share screen on the bottom.
Yep, just got it. All right, we're ready to go, Lily.
Okay, great.
All right, let's do it. So, as it's, as it's loading, I'll just, I'll just frame this up. So my name is Lily, I'm a worker-owner of the Stoke Collective along with Disha Patel and Maya Ross. We were three of a five-person team that's been accompanying the Berkshire Hill School District since spring of 2021. So two and a half years and we've had the opportunity to build a lot of relationships, see a lot of stuff, learn and grow with all of you. We wrote a bookend report to try and summarize our findings over that time from April 2021 to June 2023. And a recurring theme in the report we wrote when we first joined the district. And this bookend report is this thing we really focused on called relational trust. And relational trust just being the glue that allows all progressive initiatives to really take hold when there's many stakeholders at play. And so a lot of our our work around equity and inclusion was identifying the spaces where there was an opportunity for relational trust to grow and flourish, where it felt like there may be gaps that didn't need to be there. And this, and this quote from a DuBois staffer on the next slide, Maya, really kind of summarizes how we see the practices of relational trust, to take things slowly, build quietly, making it safer for voices to join. As leaders, holding yourself accountable by letting voices of accountability reach you and share out that feedback in a way that acknowledges access to power and communication. So we, it's just, you know, it's an, it's emblematic that this quote is coming from an educator within the Berkshire Hill School District. There are people who have deep relational skills who have moved some really incredible work forward that we've had the opportunity to witness. So hoping that that is accurately represented in our report. We identified several instances of equity-focused structures that had the potential to build strong relational trust, some of which were named tonight, which is the the Student and Adult Advisory Board, grade-level teams at DuBois and teacher leader teams at all three schools, opportunities for caregivers to organize and work together, like the DuBois Family Crew, the parent-led LPAC. And the thing we really want to focus on is the effectiveness and sustainability of structures like this require an appropriate and ongoing support from staff and administration. So that's, that's sort of what we're going to be advocating for in this report, is slowing large-scale interventions, like the rollouts of those done, so that they're they're built carefully, invested appropriately, and and move forward with intention so that trust can flourish and grow and people can follow through and balls aren't dropped. A little bit about our findings on the next slide. So just want to name our our data collection for this report was pretty standard qualitative methods. We did 26 formal interviews, dozens of like mini-interviews during multiple full-day site visits. We did site visit observations and reviewed existing district collective survey data. And also our methods included a lot more than just this snapshot. We were on the ground with folks in meetings, making stuff for two years. So have a lot of data that comes from the in-between interactions of of meetings and collaboration that are featured in this report. For the purposes of this presentation, to you all, the school committee, we're going to be focusing on what collaborations between the schools could be facilitated by district-level staff to harness existing strengths that each school has and also support each school in the unique challenges they face. And so for the sake of time, we're going to be focusing on one to two examples from each school. And again, are happy to answer any additional questions beyond beyond those examples. So we'll start with Monument. As, thanks, thanks, Maya. So Keith uplifted with this SAB retreat. SAB is just one of the many examples of opportunities for students at Monument to participate in a meaningful way in the the culture and building of their own school. We got to be a part of many of those spaces outside of SAB. There was also the Student Advocacy Program, which promotes restorative practices to resolve conflict between students and between students and adults. We worked with the student leaders from the Inclusion Task Force, who informed a lot of some of the DEI work in addition to the DEI Committee of SAB. There's just numerous opportunities for teachers and students to collaborate on making their school together. And we see that as a very, as a big strength of Monument. And the impact of that is that most students at Stoke talked with in the last two years said that there's at least one, if not more adults at their school, that they feel like they truly trust, to have their back, to support them in their ideas. And in in that willingness to say yes to new ideas that will promote student enrichment. It's just, it's, it's easy to see with how many opportunities students have to be involved. There are just some key examples from the past year that felt like, just, I don't know, proof of forward momentum. Work with SAB and the DEI Subcommittee in addition to the the Inclusion Task Force Youth Interns. There was a development of a KIVA panel, which was an opportunity for students who hold marginalized identities to just tell some of their stories and their experiences walking the halls that were heard by teachers. And then from that place, some some action was taken. There was, there's been multiple Equity PD days over the past two years where teachers who have specific skills as it relates to diversity, equity, inclusion, were able to teach their peers some of their best practices. And staff have started to use circle practice, which is a tenant of restorative practices, an alternative to exclusionary discipline and punishment in their own meetings. So there's just all these opportunities and moments where the fact that teachers and students are collaborating on building their culture is actually informing one another and making change. And with that, there are just some challenges, next slide, Maya. So adults and the students that participate in a lot of these, a lot of these leadership opportunities are participating in multiple leadership opportunities at the same time. And so that that duplication means that some some staff and some students feel really stretched when it comes to their participation. And they keep showing up because they, this is their passion, they know this is what they're here to do. But the result is is potential burnout and burning out, in particular, key staff who have have moved a lot of things forward. And the other, and some of the other issues that go along with this is like with these leadership opportunities, the barrier to having like full inclusion of all students in these, in these opportunities is adult representation. So like having an adult that looks like and or shares some experiences of the young people in that group, whether it be language, speaking a different language, or having the same racial identity or the same sexual identity, really make a difference in terms of young people being able to see themselves in a leadership role. So the lack of some of that diversity has been a bit of a barrier. And and because there's so many different initiatives, like making sure there's adequate resourcing in terms of time, in terms of people, is a barrier. So what we are talking about in terms of recommendation for district leaders and schools committee support, some things we put in the report were there are caregivers in the community and community partners who could add capacity to some of these programs, who would be really excited to. And and so one example being some of the parents and caregivers who formed the LPAC Committee have asked ways that they can support young people in the school. As fellow Spanish speakers, as people who have recently immigrated and share some of those experiences, there's a willingness and an excitement to support young people during their school day. So just like leaning on that as a strength and a resource within the district. Scheduling is always an issue. It's, it's a maddening matrix of figuring out how to make all the pieces fit. And something that we see as an opportunity is because social, emotional learning and building a culture of care are key priorities for the school district. Just making sure that there's, there is adequate time during the day for young people and adults to collaborate in a meaningful way. A lot of these groups can only meet for 15 to 20 minutes in between classes, often struggle to meet after school. And so it creates a feeling of defeat for young people when they, when they can only meet for 15 to 20 minutes, it's hard to move anything forward. So just thinking about in the long-term prioritization, how do we want to build this into the structure of our school? So more young people have an opportunity to participate and also participate in a meaningful way. And then just specific to Monument, just thinking about some of the things that have, are already working and underway, but continuing to build up some of those DEIB skills for staff, which is already happening around restorative practices, training, and some of the PD successes of peer-to-peer learning, continuing to do the things that work. And also, when it comes to making sure that young people are included and aware of these leadership opportunities, something that young people, bilingual young people and their families have been asking for is the bilingual school counselor to help them navigate the nuances of the school district and also to provide some of that social and emotional support. And a native language is critical for this population, something that's been asked for. And I don't know where things are at in that process, I know a job's been posted, but just reiterating that. And also just want to say that teacher leaders at Monument identified a laundry list of accomplishments this year as it relates to uplifting student voice and collaboration and diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we would just encourage school committee members and district leaders to take a look at the list that they created and support them in in really bolstering the things that are already working. There's so much hope that we got to leave with at the end of the year, and right now it's just a matter of investment and sustainability. So just as as those teacher leaders identify what they want to be focusing on, just like eliminating any potential barriers that make that challenging, or at least be thought partners in that process. Thanks for listening. I'm going to pass it over to Maya now to to walk us through the middle school.
Thanks, Lily. So super excited to share about DuBois Middle School, kind of what we saw as key strengths, what we heard were key strengths and some of the challenges and recommendations there as well. So starting with one of the key strengths, for the sake of time, we couldn't go into all of them, but there were so many that that were that were there to highlight around the middle school. And and one of them was the team approach and circulation of information. So really strong communication between teachers and every, all the staff that interact with students so that anyone can relay information as it relates to students or otherwise. And so the way that we saw this happening is one, grade-level teams meet every day, and each meeting has a central topic. So Tuesday for crew, Fridays are open spaces, and the staff knows when grade-level teams meet and the topic of the meeting of each day. And so if someone in the seventh-grade team hears, or has an interaction with a student in the eighth grade, they can join the eighth-grade team meeting that pertains to them without scheduling a separate time. And so one, it impacts the efficiency of communication, and two, it really allows staff and administration to provide that wraparound support to students in a timely way and to their peers as well. And so the impact that we were seeing of this is that the process, the swift follow-through particularly, really bolstered students' faith that the adults in their building heard them, that they were going to do something to address the issues that they brought up. And they were able to see that happen quickly. And so just really, this was a the key, a key strength that we saw in building trust and collaboration between students and staff, but also between staff and their peers as well. And so thinking about some of the recommendations and those accompanying challenges. So as you all know, the leadership and key staff transitions, the relational practices of the former principal built a tremendous amount of goodwill, of trust, of community with the staff and community partners, especially moving through COVID, significant structural changes as well. And those relational practices and progressive initiatives, we heard from staff and teachers that they want to know that those will be continued, continue to be promoted and also modeled by administrators at DuBois that are coming in. And so a major role that district-level staff can play is one, clearly articulating their priorities, shared expectations, and also continuing to support those successful relational practices that we've seen were just really key for students, for staff, and also for admin at the school to really make those connections. And so in clearly articulating those priorities, we also recommend that the district leadership clearly and consistently articulate why their priorities are priorities and be available for implementation, support, and guidance as well. And so another challenge that we saw was around affinity spaces for BIPOC students. And particularly BIPOC students creating a space that was the Social Justice Club. And then having that space be open to other students when it was created for students that were, that apparently didn't feel safe or comfortable at school because of their race. And so our recommendation is that BIPOC students have a space where they can support one another collectively, process their experiences on a day-to-day basis, and that there's more resources and opportunities for those select affinity spaces. We know that affinity groups have been, there have been some that have been really successful. But we saw with the BIPOC students, affinity groups particularly at DuBois, there's room for opportunity so that they have a space of their own. And so moving into Muddy Brook, I will pass it to Jish. Jish.
Hi, thank you so much. So at Muddy Brook, this was one of the schools that we weren't able to spend as much time with in in comparison to DuBois and Monument. However, we really did get to learn so much about Muddy Brook, both from this period of creating this bookend report and also from the particularly intensive information gathering that we did in the end of December 2021 into the winter and spring of 2022. And what we learned throughout that period and throughout these two years is that the elementary school staff really prioritize the growth of trust between staff and students and families, and that each of these areas, like each of these groups really require different kinds of trust-building. And they really prioritize going above and beyond to find creative ways to make sure that people are feeling like they are supported, that the education that they're getting and that their children are getting is really coming from the most resource place possible, even if that might not be the way that teachers are necessarily feeling underneath it all. They really try to make sure that there, that if there is understaffing, which there has been over the past year in particular, and if there are gaps in resources, that the impact of that is not being felt by students and families. And that's been happening through the creative use of resources that do exist and are known to staff members. This happens through the utilizing of grade-level team meetings with student support staff involved to make sure that if there are specific students that need extra attention and and resourcing, that that is happening in a collaborative manner. And they also do this through making sure that their staff presence and engagement with parents and caregivers during the pickup and drop-off times, which we've learned both from staff members as well as family members that we've spoken to over the past couple of years, that even before the pandemic, being able to have parent and caregiver interactions and conversations during those beginning of the day and end of the day periods, really made a difference in how in the loop they felt about their students' experiences during the school day, how engaged they felt in terms of opportunities to become volunteers within the classroom or within the school community, and really creating a strong, like, network of. And really creating a strong like network of coordinated engagement and enrichment of student learning. And in terms of the challenges that Muddy Brook particularly holds is that. Oftentimes, the district level professional development days, the ones that are not specifically geared towards and planned. By each of the school separately are often geared towards cultivating skills and practices. That everyone does need to know and also sometimes the ways that those skills and practices are framed. Or the context in which they are most useful are applied best to meet the needs of sixth grade to twelfth grade students. Which often leaves Muddy Brook staff feeling like they're struggling to make the connection between the frameworks and practices. That they're learning and how to actually apply them in a day to day way. And the the feedback that we've gotten from staff members and that we also believe would be really pivotal. In in helping them feel more resourced would be to increase the the types of and the number of classroom observations. And be able to give teachers direct feedback on the ways that their teaching practices are both age appropriate. And also are furthering equity and inclusion in ways that maybe the generalized education approach. Might not be totally covering and and being able to meet. Similarly, to do curriculum review, to make sure that what content is being covered and how it's being covered. Is in culturally responsive, is coming from culturally responsive resources. As well as is incorporating age appropriate activities for young people. And another point of feedback was to create opportunities for differentiated learning. To be applied to adult staff in the district by having professional development tracks during district PD days. That are either created for specific schools or for specific types of teachers, whether that's generalized teachers. Subject based teachers, extracurricular teachers, so that there are particularly focused ways. That they're able to meet their contexts and meet their day to day learning needs of their students. And another piece of it is that Berkshire Hills, as we all know, is one of its strengths. Is its ability to find and secure grant funding in addition to the per student budget that exists. And what we heard from people from staff at Muddy Brook is that there isn't always an awareness. Of all of the different resources or all of the different funds that do exist for them to be able to take advantage of. And enrich the experiences of their students. And so there's a desire and an encouragement of creating more ways for information about those resources. And those resources themselves to be easily shared or accessible to staff members. Another piece, going back to what I had mentioned earlier around the staffing, the understaffing that Muddy Brook in particular experienced. This year, there is a lot of stopgap measures that were put into place and a lot of people filling multiple roles. Multiple times for consecutively like multiple days as well or weeks even. And so putting district resources towards making creative recruitment or advertising to fill those gaps. We know that this is already happening in a lot of ways and making sure that this is a priority going into the upcoming school year. So that we're able to really resource what is really the ground level of learning and education. And growth in this district and in general, elementary schools really are the front lines in in a lot of ways. For families feeling included and and committed to staying within districts. And so we really want to make sure that they're getting all of the support that they can in creating that experience for people. And so in addition to the school based recommendations and feedback that we just gave you all. We really wanted to also highlight that there are some district wide initiatives that we also are wanting to uplift. As well as really highlight in terms of what we think would further. The district's ability to actualize equity and progress in the schools. So some of these things are listed here that we feel like the school committee in particular can really support around. In terms of checking in with the different district staff. Who are either leading or involved in making these different pieces happen or furthering them. And and making sure that there is support that can be offered when needed and where needed. So some of these pieces are religious holidays. We know that Christian holidays are often built into the school calendars in general in the US especially. And wanting to make sure that important district and building level meetings and events are not scheduled during Jewish, Muslim. Or other non-Christian holidays and being able to ensure that that isn't happening. By making sure that there's a monthly bulletin of some sort that goes out to all staff, school and district employees. To ensure that these holidays are on folks' radar for that month and can be scheduled around as best as possible. Another piece being tracking and assessing district data for DEIB implications. So there are a number of ideas that have been put forth by individuals across the different schools. For ways to begin to do that tracking, to make sure that student experiences while maybe meeting. Specific kinds of reporting data are also meeting like equity, their experiences are equitable as well. And one particular example is clinical staff and administrators at DuBois have come up with a tracking system. To look at classroom pushouts and that is something that could be implemented immediately. And that we think would really provide a lot of rich information about what is causing classroom pushouts. As well as how they could maybe be addressed in more generative and sustainable ways. Next is summer home visits for L families. We know that L families, particularly recently immigrated families. Need specialized attention and communication and coordination support. Given that there are a lot of barriers to technology usage, there are barriers to communication. And also culturally, like the the things that are implicitly understood about how a school district in the US works. Is just not always common sense knowledge for people who are recently immigrated. And being able to spend time and energy in the summer months, building out those relationships and and lines of communication. Will result in higher engagement during the school year with families and with those students. And in connection to that, as well as a little bit further around. Some of the like deleveling and proficiencies and restorative practices work that have been made priorities by the district. And around DE and IB. We really believe that both at the district staff level and also from the school committee. Being able to make a full throated, this is happening and how can we help you to do this well within your context. Is something that is really important for people in staff to hear, for students to hear. For family members and caregivers to hear, because there's often. The when pushback happens, it needs to be clear that the, this is what is happening. And not that this is an option that people can opt into or out of as they feel comfortable or uncomfortable with it. And making sure that that signals to everybody that we're prioritizing, making sure that people feel included. To move this along a little bit more, because I know we're trying to get to Q and A as well. We wanted to make sure that particularly for L families, we're also thinking about multilingual access. And and making sure that there are multiple opportunities for immigrant fam- recently immigrated families. And Spanish speaking students and families to have ways of building relationships with building administrators, support staff. And members of the guidance department in particular. And so making sure that events and processes and technologies and meetings in particularly. Have some sort of interpretation component so that families can engage fully. And understand the information that's being shared completely, so that they can be full participants. And agents of change within, within the student experience. And making sure that this idea, this event that happened at DuBois. Called Foro Familiar happened in the summer slash fall of twenty twenty two. And it was an opportunity for Spanish speaking families and students to have a more like. Family oriented orientation or open house that helped them understand the grading system, the process of registering for school. And for extracurriculars and major points of contact and how to access those individuals within a school. And really encourage the school district to continue dedicating time and resources into making sure that these kinds of spaces are. Are accessible for Spanish speaking families in particular. And then in terms of the restorative practices work in general, just wanting to make sure that this is an initiative. That is being invested in district wide and making sure that there, within that, there is a dedication to. Helping students and caregivers and families have a better understanding of what restorative practices are. And how they can be utilized and why, why it's connected to and is a different approach. But not a weaker approach to addressing harm and repair within the school community as well as outside of the school community. And lastly, to go back to something that was shared earlier around affinity groups. We really know that there are several different initiatives throughout the district to support. Marginalized students in particular to create identity based community within their schools and within the district. But a major barrier to these affinity groups taking root and feeling supportive to students is that they're often not. Appropriate advisors or facilitators for those groups. And similarly to what Lily was saying earlier, this is an opportunity and a a place where caregivers. Individuals in the community have shared that they would love to be involved in the school community by holding space for students. In this way and holding support roles within affinity group spaces. So that students can feel like they're able to talk freely amongst themselves. When someone who looks like them or shares their identities is is holding space for them. Yeah, so that was a lot of information that we just went through. And hopefully all of it sounds familiar based on the report that you all read. But we did want to just take some time right now to open the the space for any questions that you have for us. Or things that you would like to hear a little more about. We have about like five, ten minutes?
Steve, would you like to start the school committee?
Is there anyone either online or in this room who'd like to start? So you know, one of the things, it's not really a question, but it's more directed towards you, but I'd like to show people here. This is, there are some some reports, but I'd also like to hear from the administration as how we're moving forward. Not tonight, obviously. You know, they talk about things that understaffing, resources and resources mean a lot of things. It used to mean money, but it doesn't always mean money. And and grants and the use of grants. So I think over the next months that it would be interesting to hear how we're moving ahead with this.
Yeah, we we can talk about it at a future meeting and a little bit later in the agenda, I'm going to talk about some. Hires that are in the pipelines and things that'll happen from that. And in the the understaffing one is just sort of a tension everywhere. Which is we have vacant positions and then on top of that. We had a number of illness is either internally or externally that led to our own people. Being at and and when you have sort of a scouting crew to start with. And then somebody's mother gets really sick or or somebody's spouse or sibling. Then that really weighs heavy on the. So yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to talk more about that. I am curious though, anybody in the school committee has any thoughts or or reactions?
I'd like to address the three of you. Thank you for the work that you've done for the last two and a half years. I had a specific question about a specific page, page twenty six. You put a lot of emphasis on the what is is I think an erroneous term, deleveling. I like to call it leveling up. And the perception of what that is. You say, and I'll quote, "There's a need for counter narratives to replace the currently entrenched story that deleveling results in teachers." Teaching to the bottom. Student caregivers and educators are hungry for examples and stories of what successfully leveling up works look like. And then continue on. I would like, and it's possible because you spent two and a half years in the in the district. Could you give some specific recommendations? How does one do that? Because that's one of the things I hear about the high school from the community is that really it was a great academic environment. But now it's more for, you know, the quote that caught my attention throughout this is how do you teach the Brothers Karamazov? To a student who can't read the newspaper? And so therefore there's a perception that what we're doing is we're teaching at the lowest level. So how do you recommend that that narrative be addressed? You you say there's a need for it, but what would be maybe some specifics that you could offer? In regards to that comment?
Yeah. If that's okay. Yeah, great question. So I I will say the specifics of. Maybe some of the community approach stuff, like how do you shift that narrative? I think there are a lot of, there's a lot of professional development consultants that have come in and worked with different teachers around the deleveling and proficiencies work. And something that I think has been the most striking in terms of a shift in perspective and a shift in narrative, I think can be found at the DuBois Middle School. There's been some really incredible work that's happened among the instructional lead team, which includes like everything from. Taking like taking some of the professional development training and then spending like a lot of time working together. As an instructional lead team to really internalize what this is and what it means for us and our students. So like truly meet them where they're at and then teach that to the rest of their peers. I think that was a huge success that's happened at DuBois Middle School that could actually be used as an example for the other, for the high school as well. And that's something that we've kind of emphatically recommended to the instructional lead team at the high school. Is to take a page out of what happened at DuBois this year because there's been a massive shift. And 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 a kind of whole, like almost a wholesale adoption of this as the way forward. Something really cute that came up in one of the meetings that we went to is. The librarian at DuBois actually talked to her niece who's been at a deleveled school for the whole of her academic career. And it's a public school, it's not a charter, who just explained, like she brought to her niece a bunch of questions about like, well, how does grading work? Or like, how does, like, how do you make sure everyone's being adequately challenged? And her niece just had some really like just matter of fact examples of how it works. So like for young people, I think also just having adults talk to young people who have had that experience and haven't had that be a negative experience. Is something that could be resourcing as well. I think something that happened in that DuBois meeting that was really helpful for me in terms of understanding deleveling is when we're talking about a student and their progress. It's really important that there's strong communication between all three schools because we're talking about that student from age five. When they're entering the school to when they graduate and actually like bounding what they accomplish or what they learn within a single year. Is maybe not the best way to think about it, that we're actually talking about a whole child over the course of their whole. over the course of their whole educational career and the and the year to year progress. Young person um is being held by all these different adults. So I think a lot of it is is about communication, it's about thinking about what are our measures for success and like, how are we thinking about this whole child over the course of the whole of their education experience and not just like, well, they didn't get this at this time, which means it's gone. Like it's, you know, I'm passing the buck. It's like, no, this is where they're at and and this is where um it can go.
Other reactions or thoughts?
So I'll be glad to open up if there's anyone non-school committee who says anything. So uh Z. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, just say your name and address for the record.
Hi, I actually go by zinc now, but I didn't think it uploaded changed. Okay, hi. So I was wondering if um you could express a little bit about the recommendation around home visits. Um, I'm concerned about the layer of surveillance in that, that sounds like it, you know, so I'm just curious what, where the, where that narrative came from. Um, but I'm very excited and have worked with you all and super grateful. Um, you know, for the ways we've both learned. Um, yeah, that part was interesting.
Yeah, thanks for that question, Z. Um, I'm wondering if Lily or Maya, you want to speak to that first or if you want me to kind of kick it off?
I'll I'll start and then you can jump in if you want. Yeah. Um, so I think one of the um just like starting points for the recommendation around summer home visits was the work that America and Lydia were doing with our students. Um, and both of them identified home visits as one of the pivotal moments in terms of connecting with families. Um, and also making sure that they have the resources that they need. To your point, zinc, there's a level of like competence and um a level of like cultural connection that's there. Um, language connection as well. And so I think there's a little bit more thought that would need to be done if this was a widespread um initiative that, you know, that school admin or staff were um doing summer home visits, but that's where the idea stemmed from. Um, the success that Lydia and America were having with our families in terms of being at their homes um and and meeting them where they were and the the school's not being a place where they were frequenting as often. Lily or Josh, do you want to add anything to that?
Okay, um, I I guess let's go on now to Erica.
Thanks, guys. Um, I wanted to thank the Stoke collective folks. Um, I really enjoyed the work that we all did together over these years. Um, I remember when we were first starting the interviews and like this this report that you guys did and especially the color coded charts at the end that shows strengths, challenges and priorities. This is like what I've been dreaming of having in my hands. So I really appreciate um both the work for for qualitative quotes and experiences of people. Um, but also um for those of us outside of the school district, like this is extremely valuable. Uh, for those of us that are wanting to help support these changes actually happen. And um I guess I don't have a question for the Stoke collective folks, but I guess I'm just, my question would be um to the school board, to uh the committee members. What are the next steps for ensuring that these or or are there next steps for ensuring that these recommendations and especially the uplifted challenges as it is so diplomatically worded um are going to happen or be addressed and how can interested parents and community members continue in that work now that Stoke is um bidding us to do?
Erica, I'll answer the first part and then I'll let Peter answer the second part about the parents. Um, what I had asked Peter at the beginning of this question and answer period was that he come back with his team to the school committee over the next few months to brief us, to update us on how we're continuing in this project. And so so that will happen. It's it's not just going to be dropped here. This
Absolutely.
Maybe so, maybe an overused term. This is not the end. It's it's just the beginning.
And and I'll just share one thing. Um, we we posted an interview for a director of diversity, equity and inclusion of belonging. Uh, we concluded that process and we're in final negotiations with somebody. Uh, and I hope to um finalize that over the weekend or on Monday. Uh, so I'll be making an announcement. So there'll be a a a full time person who will uh help to organize and support this work, but importantly, it's not about one person. It's about um all of us doing this work together, but but one person uh focusing on it will will help support support the work happening. So that's important because there's lots more in addition to that, but but that's something um I I'm excited about. We're also uh starting a a very detailed um uh data process that we'll be using in all the schools that we did six times during the administrative retreat, like six different times uh that many of us have been trained in and understand and mostly it's common sense and good practice. Uh, and that'll be a lens we use to to look at everything we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah, so but what more to come, right? It's it's just the beginning. I I know Cory had her hand up, but there are a couple more people in the other group that have questions. Let me start with that. And I'm not sure if it's Danielle or Sarah. So whoever it is, introduce yourself and uh and and ask your question or your comment.
Yeah, sure. This is uh right, Sarah. Um, Monterey and um I think this is really just a follow up question or maybe the same question, but posed to members of the Stoke um collective. Thank you for the presentation. And I'm wondering if you have anything to add um in terms of recommendations for um, you know, getting um feedback and sort of tracking and measuring progress and in, you know, these areas that in ways that really center um the voices of students and families, particularly those that may not, you know, sort of um be able to kind of self-select to come to these meetings. If there's other like recommendations, you have to make sure that um inclusion is also a part of the the tracking and feedback process. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for for that question, Sarah. Um, I I feel like I can speak to this a little bit, but Maya, Lily, feel free to jump in. Um, I think this goes back to what we were talking about, the sort of foundation of this bookend report being around relational trust and making sure that there are opportunities like we were like both tangible and relationship based opportunities for people to feel like there is at least one or more people within the school district that they can talk with um and and give feedbacks to. And that there are mechanisms within the district for that feedback to reach the right people um and that some tangible ways like we, I spoke to at the end of our presentation around um like what does access to spaces and to people look like? Like what do people in various experiences and 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 who have various identities like need to be able to do that well? Um, and in particular, when we're thinking, like as one example, um people who English is not their first language and is not their preferred language, like how can we make sure that there's access to interpretation, um translated materials to um meeting spaces that are not particularly held just in English, but that there's time for simultaneous interpretation to happen or co like consecutive interpretation to happen where one person speaks in English and then one person translates. Or um there's lots of like consecutive um or sorry, not consecutive, but simultaneous interpretation technology that exists out in the world and like, what does it look like for the district to invest in that kind of technology so that it's readily available and accessible for people during major events or or um meetings that you really want to make sure that people who don't speak English can be at and participate in fully. Um, and and yeah, I think, I don't know if Lily or Maya, you want to speak to anything else?
Okay, uh Cory, Cory, go ahead.
I think I first, I just wanted to thank the the team for their incredible work. I think the the care and respect that you demonstrated throughout this whole process uh to us and to just the work itself was inspiring and and hopefully sets a a model for us to uphold going forward. So thank you. Um, and I think the second piece to kind of further the the questions around what's next, I guess to Peter, I don't know where things stand in terms of school improvement plans, district improvement plans, et cetera, but uh assuming that that's coming up, does it make sense to ensure that that these types of recommendations and takeaways uh are built into to some of that work?
Yeah, very much so. Uh, and and we're on the same page in terms of that, right? If if that's the concrete thing we measure our our um work by, then it needs to be in there.
Okay, I don't see any of the pins up. So I just want to thank the people from Stoke Collaborative for being here for the last two and a half years and guiding us and um you you will, I'm sure, follow us along as we go on to this journey and we really appreciate everything you've done for this district.
Yeah, you all are our partners now, so we'll be, we'll be checking up on you and feel free to check up on us and you know, these are real relationships that we've built. So thank you for that generosity, um being so open with us and being uh letting us be with you in this process. We're gonna, we're gonna miss seeing you more often, but yeah, don't be strangers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
You have a great night.
Okay, um now we're going to transition to the more mundane um which is personal electronics and and cell phones. And I'm I'm thinking many of the people on this call, I'm hoping most of the people on this call were for the Stoke conversation, but there's a possibility many people are also on this call. And there are for the the personal electronics conversation. Um, what I'm articulating tonight is just sort of a a memo that were in the packet, there's a memo uh uh articulating the the contacts, right? Uh, personal electronics are increasingly a bigger issue in um in all our lives. Uh, some people like them, some people don't like them, some people don't really like them, but feel they need them. Uh, I don't know, endless variations on that. Um, you saw probably in today's paper that that the Pittsfield School Committee took a uh stance and came up with a a policy that they're refined and are in the process of implementing. We intentionally are taking a little longer to do that and we're not doing it for the start of school, but we're starting some conversations now and in some ways waiting till um students and staff are back in school to engage them and and families in conversations. Um, our our current approach is that um uh students in grades K to six um are are meant to keep their devices in their lockers. And students in grades seven to twelve have access to their devices and try to self-monitor with support from teachers. Realistically, the addictive nature of these devices makes it hard for for even me to self-monitor, right? Yet along thirteen year olds who were are developing. So so this is a um, this is a big headed. Um, people have them out in classes, teachers often request students to put them away. Uh, if it's a laptop, you can sort of see it and see what somebody's doing. If it's a cell phone, it's under the table and it's it's very hard to to see it. Um, parents have reached out to me um uh or increasingly reached out to me uh saying they have uh concerns about cell phone use and and some one even wrote that that her daughter um might be on her um phone for four of the six, seven hours she's at school. Right? So that's something we gotta uh work through. Uh, what I articulated in the memo is that there are a couple articles that's probably worth everybody reading. Um, and and we're going to start a process where we'll convene students, staff, families, parents, school committee members to make sense of this uh and and to share their feedback. Uh, it'll include surveys, additional discussions, attracting the policy, sharing that policy, getting feedback on the policy and then implementing it. Uh, we wrote a grant to the state for twenty thousand dollars to help implement it. Um, and to preview something that's coming up at our our September seventh meeting. Uh, one of our Achilles' heels is our communication. Uh, and the communication people are coming to talk about how we communicate better. Uh, and obviously that's tied up in this. So that's sort of where we are now. Um, I'm happy, Steve, to to again sort of take any school committee comment at this point and then public comment, but but I think that the the time for bigger discussion.
Yeah, I think really, I'm not going to say no to public comment, but I think it's premature. I think our desire is to build this ahead. Hopefully, when we get done with the solution, the majority of people will be happy and that ones who aren't, we see that we were thoughtful, that we listened to people and we came up with some sort of a policy that everyone throughout the district is going to follow. But if anybody wants to make a brief comment, that's fine, but we're not near at a decision, so we're not going to spend you know, forty five minutes here to talk about something we haven't, hasn't been well thought out yet.
There's a question.
Of course. Um, so do you recognize these like a school based rule that you folks do or like a district wide policy that we vote on? It it's, it's interesting. Uh, it'll, it'll probably be both, right? So we'll probably have a a district wide policy that you vote on and then some school based procedures that you're aware of and supportive of. Right? I I think that the wherever we land, and I don't have a foregone conclusion, there needs to be real clarity because having some people do some things and other people do other things just creates chaos.
Yeah, and there's there has to be some structure. So is anybody, if anybody really feels strongly about saying something, I'm more than listen to him for a couple minutes, but there'll be plenty of time for people to to speak uh before a decision is made.
And and just for people who maybe don't do a lot of these meetings, the way to uh get recognized is you raise the hand button that looks like a hand in the bottom if you want to do, if you want to be recognized.
So I'm not saying anyone, and that's fine. I know that's not for apathy, but that's because we're running, we're we're having a process. It's kind of the way it should be.
Okay, um, so the second one, and and like you thought cell phones were mundane, this is even worse. It's the the traffic safety on our campuses. So I don't know that it was ever perfect, but but recently things have gotten worse. And I rarely write a memo like this, but there's some things that people are doing that are just plain dangerous and unacceptable. Uh, so I spelled these out. Um, and and I'll be sharing them with with Carl, we'll be sharing them with the coaches and and parents of athletes and a lot of them is connected to athletes, but they're not universally connected to athletes. But I just wanted to flag a a couple of things that are really dangerous that can't happen anymore. Um, if your kids on the football team don't park on the edge of Route Seven, we all know that to be a dangerous intersection, park in the po- parking lot and walk down with a chair. You don't want to walk down with a chair, sit at the top of the hill with a chair, but don't park off of Route Seven and then try to pull back onto Route Seven, right? It's crazy. It's just an accident. Right? It's crazy. It's just an accident waiting to happen. Um don't park in the fire lanes at the driveway entrance. It's illegal. They're fire lanes, right? So if there's a fire, a fire truck can get there. Um and cars will be ticketed and and towed.
Just to be clear that everyone knows this, because we talked about this for as long as I've been on committee, those rules are not till three o'clock. And the rules are suspended after three. Those are rules twenty-four seven.
Right, yeah, right. Nuts. Um if you are actually disabled and you have a placard. Feel free to drive down to the baseball field, but short of that, nobody should drive down to the baseball field. Right? Um and I take this personally, because I almost got hit by a son's classmate's mom who came out of there. Going forty miles an hour when I was at a tennis match, right? So like, just don't drive down there. And and as importantly, like if you're a student athlete. And you're going to play baseball, you're nuts if you drive down to the field, like. Leave your car, truck where you park at school and walk down there. Right? And and there may be some exception. If you're delivering the the cooler or Gatorade to the team. Maybe we let you drive down to drop it off and then you drive back and park and walk down.
Peter, on on the first bullet point.
Yeah.
Are there no parking signs on Route Seven?
There are, but many. And it's a state highway, don't park, you will be towed.
Is anybody in hurt over ticketed?
We're gonna work on that. I don't I don't I don't think as much, right? And I don't want to be like that guy that gets in the tow, but. Enough's enough, right? Yeah, so the next one I sort of got to, right, about like driving by the tennis courts, the softball fields. The other thing that's crazy, for the moment, there's some branches that came down. But where the old collaborative building was by the tennis courts and the softball field, that's another really dangerous. Entry and exit, right? And there are trees down, so you can't really enter there, but but people like to park there for use soccer. Uh and you come out in a blind spot, like park in the parking lot and walk a hundred yards down to the field. Um the other two that are sort of charming is um and we're trying to work on this in the context of some repaving. That may happen, but parking on Mindy Valley Road on either the DuBois side or the Muddy Brook side. Isn't great. And occasionally, there are no parking spots in the lot, and I understand why people park there. But often, there are parking spots in the lot and and it's easier to park on the street and walk your kid in. Which is actually dangerous. And there's a fire hydrant there that's often blocked because somebody parks there, right? So.
I mean, I know I know you're just embracing, but.
Yeah.
The grass is all destroyed there too, right?
It is, it's terrible.
If you go parking at somebody's lawn, that's that's a front lawn in the school. They destroyed the lawn by parking.
Uh so that's another one. The the longer-term solution there is we think we can recoup some parking spots with some future paving. Which will free up more spots in the lot, but the timing of that's tied to some some state funding.
So you can go be known to try to encourage people not to park in?
Yeah, for for weeks, many of us are gonna stand there uh in. And we we've talked. Um and and then the last one is like, you're out of your mind if you drive on our campus. Not in a designated road or driveway, right? And and I I will use the the full, and I don't have that much authority, but the full authority I do have to. To hold somebody to really serious consequences if I see anybody doing that, right? So that's not even the softball court, but a collaborative building, but people drive down um to the the other softball field. People go to baseball games and park in the outfield. Like, all those behaviors are just crazy and and that's it. Um uh so, we'll be nice, we'll be progressive, we'll tell people once, like, cut it out. Um uh then fines, tickets, potentially suspensions, right? So and I know, Rich, you don't have anybody playing baseball, but if you had somebody playing baseball and you parked in the outfield and I asked you five times to not do it. Then maybe your your child doesn't get to play the next game, right? That that should stop. Right. Um so, a- and and our our campus isn't perfect and we're trying to do things to to make it clearer. And there'll be some more fencing and signage and closing and and shifting of cemeteries. But thi- this this is important, because people always complain that our main entrance on Route Seven is dangerous. And if you believe that our main entrance on Route Seven is dangerous, then. Parking in front of a practice football field is ten times more dangerous and pulling out by the soccer. Field or the tennis courts is ten times more dangerous. Right? So I'm sorry I didn't have to write something.
Signs though. There should be signs. You don't want people parking in there. There need to be a lot of signs.
Particularly by the practice soccer field, softball field, that is a driveway.
Yeah.
There is a driveway and there's no sign to say not to use it.
Yeah.
And especially if you've got kids who are playing there, they're not at high school, so you're not clued into this as a high school space.
Right, yeah, right.
But in the same respect, the controversy about our exits and entrances, to then invent three more ways to get onto Route Seven. With traffic going fifty.
Well, that was not invented, that's what I'm saying. I thought it's a it's a paid for semi-paid travel driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it's not clear.
Maybe it's really for the maintenance guys to do work on our campus.
Well, that's like, that's fine.
What we gained up with, and it may take a little while, are are gates in all these places.
Yeah.
Um so, that that's just an FYI, more to come on that.
But we used to have a school committee member there, because we always went to the high school. Would call on everyone and say, you're gonna do anything in the middle of a meeting while all the cars parked in the parking lot? Those have been going on for years and and it does take a stop.
And and it's not just capricious, it's the real safety.
Yeah.
Um so, updates on the regional school district planning board, that's sort of, they're plugging away. I think there's gonna be a a final vote that goes to the three towns on Tuesday. The state's been reading drafts of it and giving regular feedback and and that continues. So that that agreement is is very close to being finalized and and several towns are holding. Um October twenty-third.
Yes.
As a as a uh potential date and maybe dates around that. And interestingly. Several of our our three towns and um. Five towns south of us share town council. So even if we wanted all the meetings to happen on the same night, it might not be possible from a coverage.
Apart from a town order here, I sent taken, we'll see a list of things that need to be done, what towns need to do in order to have a meeting. Town councils be available, moderator has to be available, the building has to be available, so if you're sharing a building, two towns use the same building. And so, this is a little bit more work than I think people realize. So we're hoping for October twenty-third and um we'll see how that goes.
Is it a lot of magic having it on the same night? I never thought it was part of that, I wasn't, wasn't meeting or.
No, I don't think there is. I do think that um many people would like to have at least Sheffield and Barrington on the same night. Because those two towns, if either of them turn it down, that's the end of it. So they, I think they're worried about pressure. If one town turns it down and then three towns have it three days later, what that's gonna do to affect the town meeting? I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's the right answer to this.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you, so it's it's an interesting, you know, we've gone through a lot in three years. I think everyone thought and rightfully so, okay, we'll have a town meeting on this date, but doesn't quite work that.
Um so, so other questions on the on that? So so the last one on my part of the agenda is just an update on the MSBA process and what we're doing. So um we we formed a owner's project manager selection committee. We did some uh interviews for owners' project managers. And we're scheduled to go to an MSBA meeting on September eleven. Uh where uh the the MSBA and we're there to will will appoint one of those as our owner's project manager.
They appointed.
Well, we we make a a recommendation and then they appoint.
We choose the person we want.
Yeah.
We need their blessing in everything.
Right, a- and and at this level, and this is my understanding of it, and Steve wasn't able to join us tonight. But um a- at this level, we make the recommendation and they uh acknowledge and support it. At the next level, when we select the designer architect, we have um a three votes.
I think it's three votes.
And and they have like eight votes, um but but they listen to us.
But you know, there are a couple things about this, because we've been through this, I've been through it three or four times. For this part of the project. We already know that the people who we've interviewed meet the criteria for the state, because we couldn't even go this far. The question the state's gonna look at, for instance, if a company is a small company and they already have three jobs. State's gonna say, yeah, great company, but we don't think they can do the work and put the time into it. Uh they're paying fifty percent, plus or minus, so they they feel and rightfully so that they get.
You are doing that too for the recommendation.
Right, yeah, I I mean, it was a, it was a really, some people in this room were part, it was a long process and we like.
Can we announce who who did it?
I I don't think so.
But we'll be there on the eleventh and, you know, every time we've done this, the state has put some, has been thoughtful about it. Along along, Peter's been talking to the state along the MSBA, so it's not like it's gonna be a surprise that we unveil who we're gonna recommend to them.
No, I just want to clarify, can we, can we announce who was on the committee or can we announce who the committee's recommending?
Yeah, the committee's recommending.
No, no, I'm okay with that, so who's on? But but um I I want to.
Okay, because you haven't gotten the approval from the state.
Yeah, I say, we'll we'll look at that further, but the other thing, Peter, is I had a couple people I decided to see from the building committee. Who are eager to start meeting again now that we've done this, so I think.
So what what we think's gonna happen is um um shortly after the eleventh. Assuming the MSBA uh uh signs off and lets us go forward. Um the the then-selected owner's project manager will, within a week or two. Schedule a meeting of the building committee to to start moving the work forward. And maybe even that week. I mean, the eleventh happens to be a Monday, they might get a meeting in at at the at the end of the week. Align with open meeting rules and posting, etc. As I say.
Yeah, it's good. And going back to Stoke, and I don't like that we're in line with George Halibut still at that time.
Yeah, very, very much. Yeah, and just uh I send out all the holidays all the time to everybody. Uh our our fidelity around that is is a priority.
Yeah, I, there's awareness of it from the administration. Sometimes it doesn't trickle down.
I think it's a symptom of a bigger calendar and issue.
Right.
Their communication team will have a whole whole subsection on on calendar.
The master calendar, and those days are just blocked out, it would be so.
Well, you said if we had a master calendar, I'm not sure that we do.
No, we we do, but but there's there's fidelity issues there as well. All right, so that that's it for me. The the next one's the policy subcommittee.
So subcommittee report, so we have in our packet um second meeting for policy, IK asks, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by the bill and a second by bill. This makes it easier for the second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing on and hearing on, uh roll call vote, the vote.
Hi.
And?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Can we get mine there?
I don't believe so.
Okay, Sarah?
Hi.
Bill?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes. Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
And I, Junior Ellis. And we'll make a tab, buildings and grounds. Super damage evaluation, whatever we cover, technology subcommittee. We'll talk about that sometime. Um finance.
We have not met, but Sharon's out this week, but we're looking to schedule a meeting, we'll send her an email before this, not the next school committee meeting, but the second school committee meeting. Also last one in September.
Okay.
Does anybody on the vice committee have a strong objective to that?
No.
Till like the twenty-first.
Yeah, twenty-first.
Yeah.
So we'll target that and and we'll confirm it away once we touch her.
Okay, communications subcommittee, we'll look into the variables next thing. Do you have any other personnel?
Yeah, so a couple things that that I'm really psyched about. Um uh Bruce Mallory is joining us as a a math teacher. He's got thirty years of experience, uh really talented and fascinating. When we hire somebody, I sit and talk with them for like forty-five minutes, one of the most interesting conversations I've ever had, so I'm excited for him to join us. Um Peter Lurgio is our new assistant principal at at a high school. He comes to us from Westfield, uh where he'd been an assistant principal at the middle school level. For for I think almost twenty years. Uh he'll come to a future meeting. Um again, a really impressive person, a strong organizational background and also. Uh some work in in restorative practices. Um um just to to go down the list, Richard Austin was our evening custodian, now he's becoming our evening custodian supervisor. Um we have two uh resignations, Lydia Johnson, a very strong ESL teacher, they are my preschool, we're gonna miss her. Uh and we're in the process of of trying to fill that position. And Helen Hinckley Brady, who's been a paraprofessional for many years, and we appreciate her service. Uh at at the bottom of it, there's also some good news. Um um we are finalizing appointing a horticulture teacher. Uh Bill Florrick retired, uh so uh so that's great. Um um we have a a strong candidate for the high school specialized teacher for the RISE program. Uh and and we're really excited to to hire her in the um. Uh diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging position, uh I actually would be able to announce on Monday. Uh so so that's great. Um so the the unfilled positions now, in the one-year science position, we're not gonna fill up the high school. So w- we're still looking to fill a speech language teacher position and several paraprofessionals. Um I I'm not a hundred percent sure on.
Yeah, only one came in.
Okay, I I know the specialized teacher that you filled out or not.
Oh, yeah, we shifted.
Yes, shifted somebody, so that's done too. So paraprofessionals and and kitchen helpers. Uh in a speech position, so it's not a, we're not in a terrible spot going, right? Not, we're not in a terrible spot.
So so Peter, if you fill all these positions, does the the uh overstretching that Stoke was talking about? In the schools, go away? Or are there other vacancies or whatever you want to describe them that continue to put pressure on? On the on the team?
Yeah, I mean, chronic illness of our own staff or. Dependence puts pressure on the.
Yeah.
On on the system and then um absenteeism for legitimate reasons. Puts pressure on the on the system, so uh uh the the legacy of COVID is it's still around. And if if somebody gets it, then they can't come back for five days. And and it runs through a family, nobody gets it on the same day, but your daughter gets it and then four days later you get it. And then four days after that, your wife gets it. It runs through a whole house. It's it's the better part of three weeks.
Yeah.
Right? Um so it it's something we have to continue to work on. We adjusted or I adjusted the the pay for substitute nurses, which may help a little bit. Um our our pay for substitutes is is competitive within accounting, so that helps a little bit. But it's 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 challenging.
It'll be interesting to see, just because we just didn't know to their contracts, but especially paraprofessionals and kitchen staff. Whether our contracts help at all, because last year, one of the things I learned during negotiations was how shorthand in the kitchen. And the characters work in all the squares. Because last year, one of the things I learned during negotiations was how shorthanded the kitchen and the cafeteria is working all this way.
Boy, and even in the best day, like like our our structures have three people preparing meals for. Three or almost five hundred kids, right?
No, they barely have three.
And and even if all three were there, what we're trying to do is is type, right? You could make an argument that the high school should have, or all the buildings should have four people, and maybe the high school should have five. Uh and 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 we're not there.
Yeah.
Um and there's more pressure now, because um uh lunch is free for everyone, which is great, right? So the the beds may be free for a number of years, and then the.
I I think with the Stoke thing, it's like this student-teacher ratio, and I mean, we're probably the lowest we've been in our school system.
You mean the ratio's low, or?
Yeah, like we have, we're more, we have.
Which is a good thing.
A good thing, yes, you want a low student-teacher ratio, right?
Right.
Yeah.
That means more teachers.
More teachers first, correct.
That's not what they're talking about, Stoke.
No, I I I I think Stoke is talking about uh on on any given day, if there could be. Fifty people in a building, that four or five positions are vacant, and and. Four or five more people are out for other reasons, right? Their own illness, family illness, other things, and then maybe five more people are out.
Those are your words, I think they want to hire people, but that's, we can get into this later on again in Stoke, but.
Yeah, let's let's unpack it.
Yeah.
But I I think it's interesting, because rarely do we ever talk about staffing where it it doesn't look like we're just not hiring enough people. And and I don't think that's what they do, but you and I, you know, you're right, they were clear about that. You and I both know from the finance subcommittee, the school committee almost has never turned down a request for staff in the last ten years.
Teaching administrative roles are tied to those that are distributed, there's not enough.
So let's move ahead here, any old or new listeners before the committee? Any public comment? And then for public comment, just click the like raise your hand button in the bottom and we'll break connection.
Um I I'd like to to weigh in here really quickly.
Yeah, sure.
As um the following up on on the the question about will this alleviate stress? Um we we need to acknowledge that there are a number of new positions created this year, mine included. That are specifically targeting some of these areas that Stoke identified already. Um so the answer to your question is, we'll see, um you know, we have to, I don't know what my impact is going to be of course of next year. Um but that's definitely something I'm keenly aware of and will be looking at, um you know, so. Uh yeah, I mean, just I I just take the answer to your question a little bit more.
Yeah, I wasn't turning to be contentious, I just.
No, 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 no.
You know, it's not a terribly long list of vacancies.
Right.
And yet repeatedly, in the Stoke report, there is reference to stressed-out teaching.
Right, but what struck me reading the report was the number of things that we are already putting in place that they are.
Which is, I'm talking about that, which is why I want the administration to come back to us and say, okay, we're already doing some of these things. Since the report has come out or before it became out, so that we're all aware of it.
And 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 importantly, and why I like the report, is it it raises voices that may not always be raised, right? So my perception as the superintendent might be in some places where more than adequately staffed. And somebody who's on the ground doing the work may feel they're dramatically understaffed, and. The truth might be with them, or it might be with me, or it might be in the middle, but it's worth making sense of that.
I think the other thing is, they were working over the last two years when there was a lot of COVID.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we still have COVID, but it's not so much, and and I think we have fewer vacancies than we have in quite a while.
Yeah, there was a snap job, I feel.
Yeah. I mean, in almost concerned, we are.